Good evening. It is after the six o'clock hour, we're going to call to order this special meeting of the city of Crescent City, January eighth, two thousand and eighteen. If our clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Greenow.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Councilmember Follman.
Here.
Mayor Protemkeim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
I am here. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do not have anything to report out of closed session until we move into our public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city, counsel on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or matters that are appearing on the agenda are accepted. However, note that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on any non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. All comments need to be directed to the entire council, and any comments that are not at the microphone will be out of order and not part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and your city or county residency for the record, and limit your public comment to three minutes, and you will be given an opportunity to have another three minutes to speak on any agendized item. Do we have any general public comment tonight? Seeing no general public comment tonight, then we will close public comment, and we'll move on with our agenda. Under reports and presentations, we have the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen audit. Ms. Lieberman?
Our auditor appears to be running a little late, so if we could move this to a little later in the agenda, that would be appreciated.
All right. When Mr. Badawi arrives, we will take this up.
Thank you.
So we will move on. We have some items on the consent calendar this evening, regular council meeting minutes, and closed session meeting minutes from December eighteenth and January third, the warrants claims list for December ninth through December twenty-ninth, two thousand and seventeen, payroll report for December twenty-third, paid December twenty-eighth, and January sixth, two thousand and eighteen, paid January twelfth, and the recommendation to accept the audit report, and the six of the interim city manager agreement and the attached resolution. There are a couple of things that council that we do need to pull. We need to pull item number two for a correction in the minutes from our December eighteenth meeting. We need to pull the audit report because we can't approve it till we hear it, and I would like for us to pull item number six, the resolution and the interim city manager agreement.
Move to approve items three and four on consent.
I have a motion to approve items three and four.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, Mr. Greenow. Any public comment on these items of the close, of the consent calendar? Seeing now closed public comment, and bring it back to our clerk. Would you please poll the council?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Let's take these in order under number two, under the council meeting minutes, and went back and looked at the minutes, and then looked at the actual video, and the action that we took regarding ordinance eight oh one was to send it back to the, to staff, to bring brought back with some suggested changes regarding the, it only being for new construction or, or moved, and, and what, what the minutes reflect is that we waived by full reading and, and sent it that way, which is not what we, what we did. So we just need to correct the minutes to reflect the action that we, that we actually took. And I sent the, the video link to our clerk so that she would make those corrections. So any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Then I, I guess I, I need a motion that we make the corrections in the minute to reflect the action the council took on December eighteenth.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim.
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. All right. We'll hold off on the audit report, and we'll bring that back after the audit. Under the city manager agreement, I think that, that, that we have a, an interesting opportunity with this that goes beyond just simply approving a, a contract, given the fact that it's an opportunity to, to give two things. Number one, the, the appreciation to our current interim city manager, Mike Young, for the work that he's done, as well as the recognition of the opportunity that we're providing for one of our own employees. And I think that just simply approving it on consent and moving it through just, just didn't feel quite right. So I don't have any action to take other than that I thought we should talk about it and be able to recognize both Mike and, and Eric in an open session. Otherwise, we're just saying yes, and move on. Some of you are thinking, well, why did we come tonight? So, with that in mind, I guess I will just simply make, note that on the, on the, the contract itself, it, it reflects a ten percent, because it just has a number, a ten percent increase over Mr. Weir's base salary. That's what the numbers reflect. So is, is there any other questions specifically about the contract?
No, sir.
Counsel, counsel, we all looked at. All right. Then before we, I guess we can vote on the, the contract, and then I, at that point in time, we can allow Mr. Young to, to cede authority over to our new interim city manager. So do I have, do I have a, a motion to approve Resolution twenty eighteen oh two?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right. I have a motion, second. This is a big, big vote here. I'm getting grinning. I love it. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Mayor Protemkeim.
Absolutely.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Weir. But before Mr. Young leaves, Mr. Weir and I talked about this today, and I just thought that it would be appropriate to say some, some farewell words as he leaves us. Mike Young first served Crescent City as city manager from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-nine. Some of us on this council were, were in high school then. Some of us on this council weren't born then. No offense, Mike. Served as a private sector civil engineer from seventy-nine to ninety-seven. He went to work as the Delnart County engineer from ninety-seven to two thousand. Finally, he saw the light, came back to the city in, in two thousand, and served as our public works director from two thousand to two thousand and three. Served previously as our interim city manager during a time of transition and some challenging times. In two thousand and eight, served as a project part-time engineer for four or five years for us, and then came back again at a time of transition when we needed some solid, even-handed leadership this last year in two thousand and seventeen, spent eight months with us. Just some accomplishments, stabilization of our organization, I think having somebody that could come in and, and just be able to do the job. The fact that he enabled us, along with staff, to find the opportunity to purchase Bank of America building for City Hall, big deal, really a big deal. We've completed some of the projects that have been long-term projects, the Head Start remodel, the emergency Harding Street dorm, Harding Street storm drain repair, the submission of our largest CBDG contract, along with what I think is one of the most exciting opportunities that we've had in this city in a long time, and that's the storm drain process. And you go, how could storm drain be that exciting? It's provided us an opportunity to possibly do something with Front Street, which has absolutely been unpo, impossible for us to address. And so the, the ability to do some of those things, coaxial access, which is almost done, elevated tank, which is almost done, dog park, the work towards a, a police department master plan. All these things are things that Mike stepped into and provided good leadership, along with our fantastic staff. And, and so, Mike, I, I just want to personally, as mayor, say thank you. And while I hope this is not, you don't take offense, but for forty-four years, you have, you have invested in this community, which is, again, longer than some of the people on this dais have even been alive. But we appreciate that. I appreciate it very much. I appreciate not only your commitment to this community, but your commitment specifically to us as a council to try to help us govern the very best that we can. And so I want to just tell you personally and collectively, thank you for your service.
I'll give the keys now (laughter) to Mr. Weir. It's funny as it may seem, I've actually enjoyed it. It's, it's a little different coming back and acting as an interim, knowing that it's not long-term, coming out of retirement, so to speak. So it's, I've, you know, you paid me to have fun, sort of, in a way. I've enjoyed it, but you haven't gotten a lot accomplished, but a lot of it is because you have some exceptional department heads. No one person can do it. They all do their job, and they do it well, and they're all committed to the city council. I'm going to name some of them. One of them is Megan, the housing story. I've enjoyed working with Megan, mainly because I've never had a problem[1039.23][1039.23](laughter) and knew, and knew that things were being done right, and, and she does a great job. I have another police chief. Police are always difficult. They have a difficult job to do. They always see the worst of people, but yet we have a great police department. Like mentioned, we've also almost got it up to full staff. We should just short one position now. I recruited several. One fine officer sitting over there tonight here is our, our security. He's a recent addition to, to the department. Our fire chief, Steve Wakefield, has been, he's been in the city probably as long or longer than, than I have been, believe it or not, and he does a great job. One of these days, you're going to have, have a hard time trying to, to, to fill his shoes. Linda, the finance director, has done an excellent job. Made my job a lot easier, knowing that somebody, although sometimes she clutches the piggy bank too tight. (laughter)
Good job, Linda.
Yeah. But she's really good to work with. She knows what she's doing, and she's done an excellent job. Eric Taylor is also, he was one of the ones that also helped bring the, the city home about. He was the one that first possibly picked up on the possibility that, that might be, might be available. Eric Weir, of course, who stepped into this, this office, as I told you the other day, condolences to both of you, to the council and Eric. But I think Eric will, will do a great job. And I don't know if I missed anybody. I think that covers the, you know. So anyway, a lot of what's happened has happened because you have excellent people working for you, and, and not only working for you, but committed, really committed to it. And I really enjoyed my time here, and it's not like I'm leaving. I came here in nineteen seventy-three. I thought at that time I'd been here for a short while, and here I am, still here, and raised my kids here, grandkids. I even have great-grandchildren here now. So, I'll be here until they bury me. Not soon, I hope. (laughter)
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll let Eric take over for a while.
All right.
Permanently.
All right. Mr. Weir, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, members, members of the council, if I could, I'd like to just say a couple of words. Mr. Young has been phenomenal to work with the past eight months. We have accomplished a lot. As, as mayor, you, you recognized a lot of those accomplishments. For myself, I look forward to, to this challenge, this opportunity. Thank you, guys. We have a great staff, and I know we're going to accomplish a lot. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Okay. We're going to leave the final item, number five, on our consent calendar. We will come back to that. Mr. Badawi is here, and we're, we're... Linda, do you, do you want to introduce our, our auditor and the audit presentation, and then we will come back to the approval after the presentation?
Okay. Thank you, mayor and council members. Mr. Ahmed Badawi is here to present the fiscal sixteen seventeen audit to you, which has recently been completed. He has been our independent auditor for several years now. I would like to say, from a staff perspective, it's been a pleasure working with him, and we're very appreciative that he comes all the way up here from Oakland to talk to you for about twenty minutes. So he'll go ahead and give his presentation and answer any questions that you have about the audit and what's coming up. Thanks.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thanks, thanks for having me, and I apologize if I was a little late. I wasn't sure exactly where, where I was on the agenda. But thank you for taking the time. I'm going to present to you the results of the two thousand and seventeen audit. You probably have it on your screen here, but the agenda for today, I'll let you know who the engagement team was, what were the deliverables and the scope of our audit, areas we emphasized on during our audit process, some of the required, the type of audit opinion we issued, and summarize for you some of the numbers in your financial statements, also provide you some of the required communications, and then give you an update of the new accounting standards that are coming your way. So we'll start with the engagement team. You can see it was a, really a small engagement team. I was here the whole time, and I had a staff with me. We always have an IT specialist that we use if we need to. We didn't really need to, but it was myself and a staff member for the whole time of the engagement, or the whole time of the audit. Deliverables and the scope of our audits. We were mainly engaged to provide an opinion on the city's basic financial statements. Those are the, the reports that you were provided. Basically, it has all your funds, all your assets, all your liabilities. Also, we were engaged to issue an opinion on the housing authority, the Crescent City Housing Authority, which is going to be done later. There, there needs to be some online submissions that are usually due by March thirty-first, and then normally we finalize around that time. But the audit's been completed, so it's really just a matter of procedures to finalize the housing authority. Also, the city is a recipient of federal grants, so you are subject to what we call the single audit, which is a compliance audit of the federal expenditures. So we, we provided an opinion on that, and of course, the city is subject to government auditing standards, which requires us to consider your internal control over financial reporting, and also to provide a, a report or an opinion on our consideration of those controls. We perform what we call agreed-upon procedures on your GAN limit. Your GAN limit, or your appropriation limit, is really the cap of how much the city can budget from tax revenues in, in any given year. So we perform an evaluation of that, and just make sure that you're not very close to the cap. And then finally, communication was the governing body, which is what I'm doing today, and we will be issuing a letter summarizing the communication as well. So areas that we emphasized on, we had three major areas. Those are not necessarily unique to Crescent City. We believe that those areas are just significant by nature in any government agency that we audit. The first one is revenue and receivables. Revenues is always a higher-risk area. Everyone likes to have more revenues and less expenses. So there's always the motivation to inflate the revenues and understate the expenses. So of course, we, it's easy, actually, auditing the revenues here in Crescent City because we are able to send confirmations to outside parties, a lot of your hotels, for example, to confirm the transit occupancy tax that they pay to the city. We confirm with the county all the property taxes and all the other taxes received, and we also confirm with the State Board of Equalization regarding sales tax. In addition to that, we do some testing ourselves on revenues and license and permits and, and those types of things. Pension is another area of significance and focus for us. One of it, one of the reasons the numbers are significant, it's a, it's a big liability, and, and it's also very fluid, that it is really based on a lot of assumptions, and it is very sensitive to those assumptions. So we actually spent quite a bit of time reviewing management entries to record those transactions. We communicate with the pension plan, with CalPERS. We communicate with the auditors. We confirm with them how much money the city have invested with CalPERS and a variety of other things. And then finally, management override of controls. This is in any organization that we audit. Management is the one who designed those controls, and they are responsible for monitoring the controls, and they can choose to override them at any time if they, they choose to do so. You know, sometimes it's okay if there is valid reason why they had to do that, and it was properly disclosed, but for most of the times, it's not okay. So we try to review any estimates made by management, make sure that there are no bias there. We try to incorporate an element of unpredictability in our audit procedures. We review the, the internal entries prepared by management to make sure that they are properly supported and that there is a, a good business rationale behind it, in addition to a variety of other procedures to override, to overcome that risk. Terms of auditor's opinion, we have issued what we call an unmodified opinion. That is basically a clean opinion, and opinion states that the audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards, and also in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. What an unmodified opinion means, it means that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that all estimates are reasonable, all disclosure is properly reflected in the financial statements, and that accounting policies have been consistently applied. I do want to emphasize about fairly stated in all material respects. I'm sure most of you know that an audit is not an absolute assurance, so we do, on a test basis, we don't look at every transaction. We also don't look at every five-dollar transaction. So we have some materiality thresholds that we will not go under. So that allows us to provide a reasonable assurance, but not an absolute assurance. A reasonable assurance is a high level of assurance, and, and that's what's really commonly accepted in the industry. In terms of the financial statements, wanted to show you what's in your financial statements just from a thirty-thousand-foot view, really not getting into the detail. So over the last three years, this is the composition of your assets. This is very consistent with almost every city we audit. The two largest assets you have are your cash and investments, which are crucial for, obviously, operation and liquidity, and your capital assets. The city raises resources and use them to build infrastructure and acquire equipment and things to be able to operate. I would say that over the last three years, changes have been fairly consistent, nothing out of the ordinary that will require us to do additional investigation. On, on this slide is the composition of your liabilities, and you can see that you have two big items there. Your long-term debt, and that's mainly the sewer outstanding loan, and then your net pension liability. The long-term debt has been going down. Basically, the city is making the scheduled payments as scheduled. The pension liability has gone up. That's the case with every single agency in CalPERS. It really have nothing to do with the city. The city has met its obligation in terms of the required contributions. CalPERS estimates for investment earnings were not realized in the last actuary evaluation, so you're seeing the result of that, basically. And we'll talk a little bit more about pension in the next few slides. Net position is your equity, your assets minus your liabilities, and normally equity is divided into multiple categories. The first one, the net investment in capital assets, which is usually the highest one. It is also the one that is not in expendable form, because you have already spent the money in infrastructure and streets and roads, and, and even though those are very valuable assets, you really cannot sell them to anybody, so they're not really something that you can eventually spend. Restricted amounts are normally restricted either by bond agreement, debt agreement, grantor, those types of things. And then finally, the unrestricted, that's the amount that's under the council's control, and... And the good thing is that this amount's been going up over the last few years, and right now stands at about $3.4 million. Changes in net position, that's pretty much your net profit. I always am reluctant to say net profit because cities are usually not in the business of making profits. But basically, this is your revenues minus your expenses. And you can see it's been fairly consistent over the last three years. $2.4 million in 2017, that's basically excess of revenues over expenses. Keep in mind, this is on a full accrual basis, so that after calculating depreciation and a variety of other things. So that's a little different than when you look at your general fund or your regular funds, because they follow different bases of accounting. Net cost of service to tax revenue. So this is an area where we basically try to show you how much does it cost to run all city operations. And we subtract from that any revenues that those various departments are able to generate on their own. So for example, if we're looking at Public Works, we will see how much expenditures were incurred for Public Works. And then we subtract from that any grants that Public Works was able to get, or any fees that they're charging customers, or anything of that nature. The idea is to see how dependent are you on tax revenues and whether tax revenues are sufficient to cover your costs. So in your case, it's always been sufficient. You can see over the last three years, it's been fairly consistent. I do want to bring to your attention that this is really taken into consideration also your proprietary funds, so water and sewer, which normally tend to have more income or more profits than governmental activities. So if we were to just look at your governmental activities, you will see that the number will look a little bit different. That basically, the net cost of service in 2017 was $2.5 million versus the tax revenues of $3.7 million. That's still pretty decent, but just wanted to show you basically the breakdown. If we were to just focus on your general fund, obviously, the general fund is where most of your unrestricted resources are. So it's a measurement of the city's liquidity. And what we normally do is what we look at your unrestricted fund balance in the general fund, and we compare that to your annual expenditures. The idea is to see in the very unlikely scenario that all your revenue sources stop coming in for whatever reason, how long can you continue to pay your bills using your existing fund balance? And we've determined that you probably can continue to pay your bills for about five months. The minimum recommended ratio by the Government Finance Officers Association is two to four months. I want to underscore "minimum," meaning that you don't need to be in the two to four months. If you are below two months, it raises a lot of concerns about whether can you continue to pay your bills and whether can you continue to be a going concern. So obviously, the more you have in that ratio, the better. All right. I think other than that, we can talk about pension liability. You know, this slide may be a little bit too complicated, so if you don't like it, just ignore it. But I'm just going to basically walk you through... Or at least, I wanted to highlight for you that in your pension plan, every year, there are many things that are changing. Certain things will need to be recognized immediately as pension expense, and others can be spread over time. So everything in blue have to be recognized immediately. Everything in red is spread over time. But just to let you know, what happens in your pension plan every year, your employees work and they earn more benefits, which increase your liability. The compensation changes also impact the liability. The contributions that you make throughout the year and the contributions that the employees make, and any benefit payments that are made to retirees, all of those impact your pension liability. Also, CalPERS uses actuarial and economic... use assumptions, and sometimes those actual results are different from the assumptions, and that will impact your pension liability. Also, changes made to the assumptions. So CalPERS, for example, are making those changes. They're going from 7.65 or 7.75 to 7.5, and now they're going to go all the way to seven in the rate of return. So these are all assumptions that are changing that will impact your liability. Also, changes in the city's proportionate share. So you're part of a pool, and every year, CalPERS will tell you, this year, you basically owe 10% of the pool liability. Next year, it may be 12%. So those can impact your liability as well. And obviously, the investment income. So just wanted to kind of highlight what are the changes that we are normally looking for every year and how we account for them in your pension liability. And now to more easier slides. Basically, this was your pension expense over the last three years. You can see that... And also, your contribution to CalPERS over the last three years. You can see that all of them are going up and are most likely to continue to go up. This is really one of the most vulnerable areas for most of our clients, where you can't really control it, but the anticipation is more money will need to be put in there. If we look at the funded status of those plans, you have two plans within the pool with CalPERS. The first one is a miscellaneous plan. And you can see, as of the most recent valuation or measurement date, the city had about almost $16 million in assets, about $22 million in liability, and that leaves you with about $6.4 million in unfunded liability. That's just for the miscellaneous plan. For the safety plan, you have about $7 million in assets. You have about $9.8, almost $10 million in liabilities, and that leaves you with about $2.7 million in unfunded liability. I mentioned earlier that the pension liability is really one giant estimate, and it is very sensitive to those assumptions that are used, specifically the discount rate or the rate of return on investment. So I just wanted to let you... to show you what would be your numbers if this rate goes up by 1% or goes down by 1%. I only first say it would be great if it goes up by 1%, but it is almost zero chance, closest zero chance that it will go up. Most likely, it will go down. So as of right now, you are the middle line, the 7.65%. That's the rate that CalPERS is using to calculate your pension liability. And that basically puts your total liability at about $9,185,000. If CalPERS goes and starts using 6.65% rate of return, your liability would automatically go up to $13.5 million. That's without the city doing anything, just basically changing that number by 1%. It is most likely that CalPERS will be around that number sometime in the near future. So my personal opinion is that the $13.5 is probably a more accurate number than the $9 million. However, we are really trying to look into the future. Who knows? The market's been doing great over the last year, and if it continues to do so, you know, this number is probably going to go down. So it's just hard to be able to predict. But again, that's what the actuaries do, really. So I just wanted to highlight that for you. And then the city also offer another type of benefits, is what we call the OPEB or the retiree medical benefits. Those are basically the medical insurance after retirement. And the cost's been fairly consistent. I mean, it's been going up slightly, but obviously, medical premiums also been going up. And to show you the funded status, the city has opened a trust account with PARZ, and the city started putting money aside to fund that liability. I believe the city have more money now, but as of the most recent actuary evaluation, the city had about $291,000. However, the city's been putting money, I believe, every year in that trust. You have currently about $1.5 million in liabilities, and that leaves you with about $1.2 million unfunded portion. Keep in mind, this is as of July 2015, the most recent actuary evaluation. So next year, the city will be getting a new actuary evaluation if the city hasn't already done so, so the numbers will obviously look different. Other than that, I just wanted to walk you through some of the required communications that I have to communicate to you. So actually, this is the only required part of the presentation. And honestly, it is not the most exciting part, so I add the first part to at least keep your interest, because if it's just this part, you're probably not going to want me to come here. But anyway, our responsibility under generally accepted auditing standards, as your independent auditor, is to mainly express an opinion on your financial statements, whether they're fairly stated or not. We're also responsible for evaluating the internal control over financial reporting, evaluating compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. We're responsible for evaluating the tone at the top and making sure management is sending the right message to the rest of the organization about the importance of controls, about the consequences of committing fraud or overriding controls or those types of things. We are responsible for ensuring that your financial statements are clear and transparent. And finally, we're responsible to communicate with the governing body, with the city council. Management have a lot of responsibilities in this process. Management is ultimately responsible for the financial statements. So like I mentioned earlier, an audit only provide a reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance. So management still take responsibility for those financials. I don't believe that's the issue here, but sometimes in some other clients, we sometimes feel that there is misunderstanding about the expectation that the client feel because they hired an independent audit firm, that that relieves management from its responsibility, and it really puts the responsibility on the auditors. So I just wanted to clarify that that is really not the case. Management still retain that responsibility. Of course, we are responsible to the extent our professional standards requires us to be. Management is the one responsible for establishing and maintaining internal controls, for making all financial records available to us during the audit process, for adjusting the accounting records for any material misstatements, for preventing and detecting fraud by establishing procedures or controls to prevent and detect fraud, inform us of all known and suspected fraud, comply with laws and regulations, and take corrective action on any audit findings. In terms of independence, we are obviously your independent auditor, so we have to maintain our independence, and that's solely our responsibility. So the city doesn't really need to do anything to ensure we're independent. And we follow a variety of rules, from the ICPA to the California Award of Accountancy. And it really encompass many things, from do we have us as individuals, either myself or anyone in my team, do we have any relationships with city management or city staff, direct or indirect? Obviously, we have to evaluate those, and we remove those individuals from the audit. We did not identify any kind of relationships. We also have to evaluate any additional services we offer the city and make sure that those services do not impair our independence. So if we have, you know, if we charge you $100,000 in consulting fees, that may bear on our independence, because the audit is not really that expensive, and, you know, we may be inclined to want to make sure to keep the consulting work so that impact our independence. So luckily, we don't do any of those additional services, but it's basically part of our responsibility to evaluate our independence. In terms of timing of the audit, we believe that the audit was performed in the timeframe communicated to the city. In terms of significant accounting policies and unusual transactions, there were really no unusual transactions, but we have considered several accounting policies. One of them was the first one, GASB 74, which really dealing with a trust fund for OPEB, the PARZ fund. So we implemented that this year. I believe the other ones were not really applicable to the city. In terms of management judgment and accounting estimates, I mentioned earlier that not every number in your financials is an actual number. Some are estimates, and that's totally acceptable, as long as there is a reasonable basis behind those estimates. So just wanted to give you an idea about some of those numbers that are estimated. Also, in terms of sensitive disclosures, I just listed for you a few known disclosures that I believe provide some important information. There is nothing really alarming about those known disclosures, but they really just provide additional information that helps a reader understand the composition of these numbers. I'm pleased to say that we encountered no difficulties during the audit. We really felt that city was prepared and very responsive to our requests, and we believe that they do good accounting. The quality of the schedules and the backup that we get from city staff are considered to be, in our opinion, good quality. So appreciate that. There were no audit adjustments during the course of the audit. That's a very good sign. Basically, if we come in and start looking at your records, and then we're coming up with all sorts of corrections, that really brings questions about the accuracy of the accounting that is being done throughout the year. So we felt very pleased that there were no adjustments. There were no significant risks or exposure that were identified to us. We communicate normally with legal counsel, so they disclose to us outstanding litigations. Obviously, those litigations sometime... some of them are covered by insurance. The ones that are not, we want to make sure that they are properly disclosed. But other than that, there was really nothing that came to our attention that caused us We're pleased to report that we had no disagreement with management, and we had no material weaknesses identified in internal controls. We have requested certain representations from management that were dated December 27th. That's a standard procedure. We normally ask the city manager and finance director to sign a letter, basically telling us that they have disclosed to us all known facts, that they're not aware of any fraud, and it's a very lengthy letter full of representations that we put reliance on. We're not aware that management has contracted with any other accounting firm to consult on any audit matters. Other than our engagement letter and the representation letter, we had no other significant communications with management. There were no material uncertainties relating to events and conditions, and we have not become aware of any instance of fraud or illegal act that were not reported to us by management. Following is a listing of all the new accounting standards that were issued. That doesn't mean that they are going to be applicable to the city, but as we get closer to them, we normally discuss them with city staff. And we also host a training seminar every year that we invite the city, and we also provide training on those new accounting standards and what it will take to comply with them. With that, I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. Really appreciate it and more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Badawi. Questions, council?
I'd just like to say that I participated with the Audit Committee with Councilman Greeno, and I want to thank Mr. Badawi again for making it palatable to a person who's uneducated in the auditing world. You made it very easy to understand. And again, thanks, Linda. Mr. Badawi complimented your work again, just like we hear from multiple sources. So I just wanted to thank you, sir, for coming up and giving us the presentation and also explaining it to Mr. Greeno and I, again, making it simple to understand.
That was easy.
I only have one question, and I hate to put you on the spot, but I know we talked, not this year, but last year, about moving forward and having another partner so that we don't have to change auditing firms. Is that still something you're pushing towards? Because we would love to have you continue to work with us and our staff.
Definitely. We are required by California law to rotate the partner after a certain number of years anyways, but we will have a partner available when the city chooses to do so. We will have a partner available to rotate.
Awesome. Very good. Well, we very much appreciate the work, and having served on the Audit Committee in the past, I have to hand it to you. For those of us who don't do this for a living, you have made it very palatable for all of us. And it is always good to hear from an independent source that our staff is as good as we think they are. So we appreciate that, too.
Thank you.
All right. Anything... Any final words, Ms. Leaver? Is there anything that you needed to tell us? All right, Mr. Badawi, thank you so much. We appreciate you coming.
Of course. Thank you for having me. Have a good evening.
All right. Counsel, we will move out of this presentation, and we will go back into the consent calendar. We have one item left on the consent calendar. That is the audit report, which we just was presented to us by Mr. Badawi for 2016, 2017. I would entertain a motion that we accept the audit report. Okay, I've got multiple. Ms. Clerk, if you'll just choose one of them. One of you are okay with being the second?
Certainly.
But Mr. Short is willing to be a second. Thank you. All right. Would you please poll vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kaim?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore? Yes. Very good. We'll move on through our agenda then, and we have no ceremonial items, but we do have one public hearing. It's item number seven on the agenda, hold a public hearing regarding the fee schedule of the city of Crescent City and the recommendation that we have attached. Ms. Leaver, address this for us. Ms. Lieber, address this for us.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So normally, we look at the fee schedule every year in about May or June as part of our budget process. You do have the option of updating the fee schedule at other times, and there are two fees that we would like to bring to you tonight to request that we update. One of them is, it's called SB 1186. It's a fee that the state requires us to charge. It's attached to business licenses. For the last several years, it's been a dollar. What happens with that money is the city keeps a portion of it, we send a portion of it to the state, it has to be used for ADA compliance activities, and they announced that effective in January, right now, they are raising that mandatory fee to $4. So we just need to update our fee schedule. That's not something that the city is choosing to impose, but the state has regulated. I do need to ask for counsel direction on one item related to that. So as you know, we do allow certain businesses an exemption for business license fees. Nonprofits, veteran-owned businesses, there's a couple of other exceptions. And up till now, we have not been charging them that $1 fee, but that $1 fee still has to be collected into this fund, so the city has just been paying that $1. I just want to clarify with the counsel if you want us to continue doing that now that that fee is increasing. Or the other option would be the exempt businesses would have to pay the $4 fee, but not any other city fees related to the business license. The other fee that is proposed tonight is for the taxicab application. So what happens when somebody turns in an application to be a taxicab operator, they have to be fingerprinted, and they have to have a background check done, and the way that actually works is that the city receives a bill from the DOJ or the mailroom for providing those services, and this is just to recoup those costs. So the recommendation is to hold a public hearing, provide direction on that $1 versus $4 exemption, and then approve a resolution to update the fee schedule if you choose.
All right. Counsel, you have questions for Ms. Lieber?
How many businesses are you looking at that get these exemptions?
There's about 35 right now.
Okay. Any else?
No, sir.
Steve, with the way that it's structured with SB 1186, they're changing the percentage, so if it's for ADA, did they change any of what this money is to be used for with this? So then, 90% stays, 10% goes on, so $3, what's nine times four, $3.60. Do we have to put that into a separate fund and maintain that to be used only for those items, and then send them the 40 cents per license?
Yes, and we have been doing that for the last several years, since the fee's only been a dollar total, and I think we've been doing this since 2013, I believe. We've got under $2,000 in it, so we've just been building it up until we have enough to actually do something with it.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess, so the first question as far as SB 1186 is for the council is, is it the council's desire to continue with the practice of waiving this portion of this fee along with the rest of their business licenses for nonprofits, veterans organizations, going forward, or changing and assessing that portion, but not the rest of the permit fees? Or a portion, either way?
I have a question. Is this a yearly fee?
Yes, it's once per year.
I think we should continue to pay that. We're talking about keeping most of those dollars in our coffers to do improvements around the city for ADA improvements. I think it's a paltry sum.
90%, we're just, we're giving back to ourselves, setting aside for this?
Exactly.
Yes.
For these 35 businesses?
Right.
Or whatever. Everybody else is paying into it?
Yes.
Okay.
Echo Mr. Short's comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, then, let's address SB 1186 first.
I do have one more question.
Yeah.
How often do they change these regulations?
SB 1186 was new when we started in 2000, either the end of 2012 or 2013, and this is the first time they've made a change since then.
Okay, it just seems like if they're going to keep re-upping it every year.
Whether or not, they set a schedule, and so the $4 runs through January of 2024, and then it's going to return back to a dollar.
Right.
So they've set up, I mean, obviously, the legislature could come back and make a change to it, but that's the plan at least. I'm assuming that somebody has lobbied for local municipalities to be forced into doing more ADA work, and so this is a way to insist that there's more money set aside to do ADA work.
I couldn't comment. That could be true.
But since it's people like us that come up with those ideas, politicians, I mean, so, okay. Let's take SB 1186 first, and the specific $4 collection.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Could I just point out, would you need to have public comment on the public hearing portion before you make a decision?
Okay, all right. So we can deal with these separately?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let's deal with this first. Do we have any public comment regarding this business license fee increase? All right, a closed public comment, bring it back to the council then. If I could get a motion regarding what to do concerning the $4, two things, to increase our fee structure to the $4 for business licenses for SB 1186, and then, secondly, what to do in regards to nonprofits and veterans organizations?
Mr. Mayor, I move we increase our fees for SB 1186 up to the mandated $4, and continue to pay those as the city for exempt businesses.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on this action? Seeing now a closed public comment, and bring it back. Would you please poll the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. All right, second item, taxicabs.
So this is to cover the cost of the fingerprinting and background check services. The way it's been working up until now, the person who wants to apply to be a taxicab operator, they go out and they have their fingerprints taken, they submit to a background check, the city then receives a bill for that, and then we try to bill the person who applied and collect it after the fact. This would just let us collect it at the time of the application.
Okay, makes perfect sense to me. Any questions, comments?
I was going to say that makes complete sense.
All right.
Did it.
Okay, let's open up. We have any public comment regarding the taxicab operator application fee? Seeing now a closed public comment, then, and bring it back to the council for a motion regarding this fee. This is a new fee.
It's not a new fee, it's just how we collect it.
It wasn't on the fee schedule before. We were just trying to get reimbursed for a cost based on a sort of a as-it-happened basis, and this just puts it on the fee schedule, so it's very clear from the beginning, if you turn in this application, this is what you're going to have to pay for.
So this is the actual resolution, 2018-01? Is that correct?
Yes, we will approve the resolution after we've got clarity on the actions. So I guess we'll have a third action. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we add a fee of $70 to cover the services and staff time for reviewing applications of taxicab companies.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please poll the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, and now we will turn our attention to Resolution 2018-01, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, establishing certain fees and increasing certain existing fees for various city services provided by the City of Crescent City, and we will note in this resolution the actions that we just took regarding SB 1186 and the taxicab fee. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-01?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Follman. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Mr. Greenow. Any public comment on Resolution 2018-01? Seeing now a closed public comment, would you please poll the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Kime?
Yes.
And Mayor Inscore.
Yes, very good. Thank you. All right. We are moving along here. All the way back, are we adjourned this discussion? Okay, so we need to adjourn from the city council and reconvene as the successor agency. We'll dispense a roll call, identify that all board members are present. We do not have, is number eight, is that the consent item? I'm assuming it is.
Yes, it's the consent item.
Okay, so we have one item on consent, the appointment of Mr. Taylor to the Oversight Board. We need to have representation there. Do I have any public comment on our consent calendar for the successor agency? Seeing now a closed public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent calendar for the successor agency.
Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Seconded.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Not any money involved in this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? All right. Under business items, we have our ROPS, and then a request for proposals regarding property. Ms. Lieber?
Thank you again. So for this evening, we have the ROPS, the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for the Successor Agency for fiscal year 2018-19. This will be presented to you tonight for approval. Assuming it is approved, it will go to the Oversight Board this week on Wednesday for approval, and then it will be submitted to the county and the state. As you know, when the redevelopment agency was dissolved and the successor agency was established, the main purpose of the successor agency is to wind everything down from the RDA and basically get everything closed out. So the successor agency has a couple of outstanding loans. This ROPS would basically tell the state that we would like to make a payment of approximately $106,000 on that loan this year. That would take basically the remaining funds in the successor agency, plus a little bit from the RP TTF funds to make that payment. We do have to pay the CREF loan off completely before we can start paying on the water fund loan. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about this. One thing to note is that, assuming the state does approve our request for RP TTF this time, then that means that in the year following that, we can start asking them to pay for some of our admin time again, which we used to do, and then for the last couple of years, they have not let us.
Okay. Any questions? Did I look at the numbers correctly? Is, are we, does it look like we will then pay that off next year likely if the numbers stay the same as they have in the last two years?
Yes, that's correct. That is the plan. Of course, it always depends on what property text does and the admin allocations and all of that, but it should be, yes.
Good, very good. All right. There's one page.
It would be nice to be up from under.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, anybody have any questions regarding the ROPS units? Okay, then we have an attached resolution, SA 2018-01, to approve.
Move to approve, or to adopt Resolution SA 2018-01, approving the ROPS schedule.
Did we get public comment on this?
We did not. I interrupted.
I will.
Okay, sorry.
I will. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on the Resolution SA 2018-01 of the successor agency for Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule? Seeing now a closed public comment, and we will bring it back to the board for a vote. Would you, Kirk, would you please poll the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Councilmember Greeno?
Yes.
Sorry, Vice Chair Kime and Chairman Inscore.
Yes, thank you. Okay. What's next? So this was an item that we discussed previously, and now we have the RFP ready to go out to try to address the two properties that we're holding in trust on behalf of the?
Yes.
Okay.
So when the RDA was dissolved, it owned five pieces of property, two vacant parcels, which are the subject of this RFP, and then also City Hall, the Police Department, and the Housing Authority, which were transferred to city ownership. So the only thing that the successor agency still owns is these two vacant parcels. At the last successor agency meeting, I was directed to put together a request for proposals so that we could get a Realtor to try to sell these two pieces of property. Our former city clerk, Kimmy Scott, reached out to some other cities and got a draft RFP and made some, did some work and modified that. I also worked on it, and our city attorney worked on it. So what you have before you is the RFP that we are proposing to publish so that we can get this process moving, but I wanted to give you, as a board, a chance to review it and see if you had any changes you want us to make before we publish this.
Okay. Does the board have any questions or comments, concerns regarding the RFP for Realtor services? And I may have just missed this, but I, I may have just missed this, but I did not see this on the successor agency agenda. Do we not need the, for Wednesday?
Do you mean the Oversight Board?
I mean, the Oversight Board.
Right, the Oversight Board doesn't have to approve this.
We don't have to see it yet.
I'll just give an informational update.
Okay, I didn't get these two mixed up.
It's understandable.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have anything? Okay, do we have any public comment on this RFP, putting out for Realtor services for these two parcels? Seeing now a closed public comment, and bring it back to the Oversight Board for action. I guess you're just asking us to approve the RFP?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And direct staff to publish it, yes. All right, why don't you make that motion, so you got it all figured out?
I move we approve the request for proposals and direct staff to publish the RFP and solicit proposals.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please poll the vote?
Sure. Board Member Short?
Yes.
Board Member Greeno?
Yes.
Board Member Follman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kime?
Yes.
And Chairman Inscore.
Yes, very good. All right. Having no continuing business or new business for the Oversight Board, we will return to the city council, and we will finish up. I don't know that we have any legislative matters that we need to specifically address. You've got a long list of things already, right, interim city manager? Let's go ahead and turn our attention to the council. I know we've been on holiday, but if you have anything specific, council members, that you would like to report out of the past weeks, or in upcoming meetings, or so forth, I give you an opportunity to do so. Mr. Greenow, I'm going to start with you. Anything you want to share tonight?
I do not have anything.
No? Short?
No, sir.
Mr. Follman?
Other than welcoming Mr. Wiron as our interim city manager, I don't have anything to offer tonight.
All right, very good. Protem Kime?
I am good, thank you.
Very good. All right, well, I'm trusting everybody did have a good holiday season. I will just bring up one item that we have talked about previously that I would like to get the council to weigh in on. We need to continue to address the ongoing financial situation of our sewer fund, just from a history. Just from a historical standpoint, the, the city has not raised sewer rates since I've been on the council. The last adopted sewer rate increase was in March of 2014 and took effect in July of 2014. So we are, we are pushing four years without any increases. I know that we had a failed attempt at, at a different consideration regarding sewer rates with consumption base, and, and those things have been put on hold as we continue to address how do we best serve our community. At the same time, the, the cost of doing business for every entity, private and public, has continued to increase. We all know that. It costs more money to do business today than it did four years ago. In the most recent Western states CPI, we saw about a 2.7% increase. So for some people, you look at that as COLA or what goes up, you know, as far as on that kind of thing. I think that, I, I would like to ask the council to, to consider asking staff to begin a, a process of really looking at addressing our current sewer rate structure without changing it materially, but simply saying, we, we need an increase of revenue after almost four years, and to start with maybe that 2.7 number and say, we need to work with something to increase revenues so that we can continue to provide services. So I, I just want to throw that out to the council before we direct staff. Staff has talked about some of these things, but I'd like to get council's thoughts on that.
I concur. I, I think it's no secret that we need to have some action with our sewer fund, and I think taking a modest approach and just dealing with the CPI is a fair way to go about it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
When I ran for office, I advocated for the sewer increase at the measure app, and it didn't pass. So I, I believe that we, it's high time to, we, we just need to buckle down and take care of our sewer and, and our water systems, you know? We take full advantage of every day. I mean, we, we don't, we, we don't appreciate them until they're not there, when things don't start, you know? Push that lever and things don't go away. I mean, I hate to be blunt, but, you know, we gotta keep things going.
It is, it is, it is a valid point.
Keep things moving.
Keep things moving, thank you. All right. Mr. Follman, any thoughts?
I mean, I don't think we've had an explicit conversation about sewer rates since the three of us were elected to council. We've had discussions about rates generally, discussion about budgets generally, but I think it's time that we really zero in on that focus or that area of public policy. So I'd like to see what staff can come up with.
Prochem?
It's clear that, you know, when you look at the numbers and you look at the needs to fulfill, and the desires for, you know, bringing in new businesses and expanding, we need to reevaluate.
We do. And, and I think one of the things that, that we need to be clear about when we, even as we communicate to the public, and, and there's not anybody up here that, that just wants to take more money out of people's pockets, because those are our pockets as well. And, and we're not talking about doing anything that is going to change materially the long-term viability of our entire system. There are huge things that we're going to have to address going forward. Some of those are capital improvement things, some of those things we're gonna be able to do with grant funding. Some of those things may be done as we continue to work with the State Water Resource Control Board. Staff has worked hard at that and have been part of some of those discussions of looking at that. Really what we're talking about, from my perspective, of, of, of a, just a cost of living, CPI increase, a modest increase, is how do we make sure that we just keep that plant running as it is? And we need to be able to do that, because it's more expensive to do that today than it was last year. And the assumption will be, it'll be more expensive for anybody that's in business to do business next year than it was this year. Even, even simple things like labor laws where the, the mandatory minimum wage, while that may not apply to very many of our workers, it still has impacts. And, and it's, and every business in our community understands that, so.
Requirements from the state.
Exactly.
As requirements from the state come down, those are, those are, that's money that we don't have a choice.
Yeah.
We have to spend. We have to upgrade and we have to improve.
Okay. Well, Mr. Weir, obviously, your, 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 your first day on the job, you, you get the, the, the great opportunity to address this, but I hope that, that, that you've heard clearly from the council that you have our support with the staff to begin addressing these issues and bringing back something to us that we can, that we can talk with staff about, and hopefully with your leadership and leadership of our financial team to be able to say, how do we approach this in a way that, that we can really address our immediate needs to make sure that this system stays viable? So, you know, any input you want to give tonight, you know, I don't expect you to have a plan, I just want to make sure we get this discussion started.
No, and I definitely appreciate getting this discussion started. It's, it's, it's vital for this community, as, as you all iterated, and so I just want to thank you for, for the support in getting this done. It's, it's not only the fact that costs continue to rise, our debt service that we have on our loan, it goes up $100,000 each year until it finally caps out. I believe we're at about 1.3, 1.4 now, and that's gonna go up till we get almost to 1.7. So as we go through, we have to start doing something to increase our revenues. Our revenues haven't really increased since, since 2000, uh, since 2014, and so it's time to do something. And, and as inflation goes, settle our costs. As far as clear direction from the council, are you looking for staff to come back with the last year's CPI increase? Because obviously.
I mean, obviously CPI is, is, it comes up quarterly. I, I, I think that we're in that, that number. If, if an odd number, like, I, I just pulled up the Western states from last year, it was 2.7, because we talked about it in other, in other forums. If, if we want to go with a round number that works better for communication, I'm not against that, if that's 2.5 or if that's 3. We can pull the, we, we can, in the process, I don't, I don't expect that you'll have something back to us at our next meeting. We can, we can look again in March at what those numbers are, March to March. Ms. Lever, they come out quarterly, don't they? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but we did talk about that. Do, do, do the CPIs come out quarterly?
They, they actually publish a monthly, year-over-year number, yeah.
So we can, we can look at what that is.
We can pick any month, really.
Yeah, I guess my recommendation, and I get consensus from the council, is, is look at what our most recent 12 months are and see what that, what that number is. Then we're, at least when we communicate to the public, we're communicating to them exactly where we are. And, and we're not trying to get something other than making sure we keep up with costs. So, does that seem reasonable?
Certainly.
Okay. I agree with that.
Clear direction, thank you.
All right. Mr. Weir, you have anything that you want to share with us tonight before we dismiss?
I was, I was kinda curious about the two little people in the back, see if they had any public comment on the new city manager's appointment.
Okay.
That's the, uh.
Really don't want to know.
Thank you, Council.
Troopers back there watching the new city manager.
Nothing, Sienna? No comments?
Want to say something about your dad's name?
All right.
Oh, daddy's cool. There we go. That's worth, that's worth something tonight, that's for sure.
Yeah.
But yes, I would like to just thank my family who happens to be in the audience, my wife, Amber, and my daughter, Sienna, and my, and my son, Marcus. And so I'd like to thank them for all of their support and, and thank the council, as this is, this is gonna be challenging times. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us, but together, council, staff that we have, we'll get through it. So I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank Autumn Luna for being here, sitting in and being here tonight. We appreciate you coming in and helping us.
My pleasure.
Good. We'll see you again in two weeks, I, I imagine, because we are, because.
Another Monday meeting.
Another Monday meeting.
Yeah, I think that's right.
All right.
I think Martha's in bookings now.
On, on the odd or even weeks, whatever it is.
All right, see you in two weeks.
Okay, it's, yeah, so we'll, it's all good. All right, well, we're going to stand adjourned until our next meeting, which will also be a special meeting on January 22nd, 2018, right here. We're adjourned.